Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council for this Monday, December 2nd, 2019. It's after 7:30 PM. I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving. Weekend went too fast, though at least for some of us, Saturday was a successful endeavor with the team up north. Next regularly scheduled meeting will be Monday, December 16th, 2019. If you would, Mr. Apollo, please call the roll.
Mr. Ansel?
Here.
Mr. Bastancic?
Here.
Mr. Cavan?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Silvestri?
Here.
Ms. Warden?
Here.
Everyone's present and accounted for, so we do have a quorum. The agenda will remain as presented, and at this time, I would ask you to stand and join City Council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the November 18, 2019 council meeting. Motion to approve by Mr. Myers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The minutes of November 18, 2019 are approved. Mr. Mayor, welcome, and that was quite the celebration we came back from. Welcome, and I look forward to your words this evening.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke and council members, and thank you again for joining up at the hospital this evening to celebrate our fifth Thompson Reuters or now IBM Watson Top 100 Award. It is one of the best awards in the industry, but then also to surprise our CEO, Bill Sharon, with a 25th anniversary celebration because this year marks his 25th year with our hospital, and he has done an outstanding job in guiding the ship, so we are thankful to have him and really appreciate his time here in our city. Just some things to bring you up to speed on. President Biden-Dyke and myself and John Scavelli met here within the last two weeks to talk about the Charter Review Commission. Many of you people on council have given us recommendations of citizens you felt would be good on that review. It happens every 10 years in our city. It's a requirement of our charter, and usually anywhere from 13 to 15 members are on a Charter Review Council. They have to deliberate for a considerable period of time if changes are brought forward, but they do put quite a bit of effort into making sure our charter is up to date with current conditions. So we are working to try and invite folks to be a part of that, and have sent some letters out asking people to consider. So we'll keep you abreast of how that's going. President Biden-Dyke really is the person that has the responsibility for council to employ a Charter Commission, citizens for our city. I attended a group meeting sponsored by the commissioners who put together a group of all entities within our city that have been affected by the opiate addiction and control problem. And what it was for is to talk about the state has entered into a lawsuit against the manufacturers of opioids, and there may be some monies generated by this lawsuit. And so they have been very proactive and said, let's get together and talk about if something comes forward, how should we look at utilizing those funds. So it was the initial talking points with the group, and we probably will have some thoughts to bring to council once we digest and get more information from that group as far as how we proceed forward. I just wanted to keep you informed that that was something that I attended within the last two weeks. We celebrated Window Wonderland downtown again this year, and it was a wonderful event. Santa made it down from the roof again safely, which we're always thankful for. Our fire department is a great asset to us in helping that happen safely. So hopefully you got to be a part of the big throng down there. I think it was one of the largest we've had again, and it's always a celebration for our town. Just want to end up with a memo that's in your packet tonight from myself about board and commission appointments. These are the different commissions of the city that need council approval, and so these are the members that I am recommending to continue on boards or be appointed to boards. And I'm here to answer any types of questions or concerns you might have, but I feel all of these people have either served us well or will serve us well in individual capacities. So any questions there, I'll be happy to answer, and we are here to help. It's a long agenda tonight with many involved issues and our budget being one of the biggest, so we are here to help explain or answer any questions on that. Thank you, and our best in the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate you and Mr. Scavelli's help in selecting people to ask to be on the Charter Review Commission and sending out letters. Thank you, Apollo, for doing that as well. So the mayor has a list of various commissions and boards that needs appointments, and I figure we'll just go right down the list. I should say that I'm not so sure about the community reinvestment area housing appointments, but hey, you know, if you can get volunteers to do it, you take what you can get. Just kidding. Jen Warden and Mark Cavan are appointments for that, so I say that all in good fun here. Well, the first one is the Civil Service Commission. Reg Kramer has been nominated by the mayor. Reg is an attorney. I think he's retired now, but I've known him since about circa 1972 when he and our pals crossed at the College of Worcester, and he was a good attorney and a good person. So I think that's an excellent choice, and I'm biased maybe, but I think that's an excellent person to be on the Civil Service Commission. That being said, does anyone like to make a motion to approve Mr. Kramer's appointment? Some of... Motion by Mr. Myers, is there a...
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel to appoint Reg Kramer on the Civil Service Commission. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Then Mr. Kramer will be appointed, and I appreciate him agreeing to serve. Next one is Hospital Board of Governors, and I guess this is actually a reappointment, and I don't know, Reg might have been a reappointment too. It's Greg Long. Greg, of course, is an accountant with Long and Cook and...
Samson.
Samson, yeah. Right across the street here, and he's served a term or two on the hospital board, so...
He was appointed in 2012, so this will be his third term on the board, which according to our current charter, will be his last term.
Yeah, right. So anyone would entertain nominating Mr. Long?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Silvestri, would you second that, Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
And second by Mr. Cavan. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of appointing Greg Long on the hospital board, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Next is the Tax Incentive Review Council, and the nominee is Adam Briggs. He has a financial background, and he's served on that before and has served well. I've had an opportunity to serve with him. Is anyone willing to nominate Mr. Briggs?
Moved to nominate Mr. Briggs.
Motion by Ms. Warden to appoint Adam Briggs, second by Mr. Myers. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of appointing Adam Briggs on the Tax Incentive Review Council, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. He is on the... is the appointee on the Tax Incentive Review Council. That brings us to the Community Reinvestment Area Housing Committee or Commission. The two nominees are Jennifer Warden and Mark Cavan, and I would request that someone make a motion that we appoint these two by unanimous acclamation.
I'll make it.
Motion by Mr. Bastancic to appoint Jennifer Warden and Mark Cavan by unanimous acclamation, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it's unanimous, it probably isn't, but here's your chance to get out of it there, folks.
We even have to...
All right, Jennifer Warden and Mark Cavan are on the Community Reinvestment Area Housing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank the all the nominees and now appointees for serving, because it's hard to find volunteers this day and age, so I appreciate it, and thank you, Jen, and thank you, Mark.
My pleasure.
All right, our next item of business is petitions and communications from the public. No communications from the public, and I don't think we have any petitions tonight. That brings us to committee reports, and I don't think we have any committee reports, although we do have a committee meeting next Monday, is that 5:30?
Yes, sir.
5:30.
Yes, sir.
Finance committee meeting at 5:30 Monday. So, Mr. Rooney, if you thought you were going to have the Monday off to watch Monday Night Football, I'm sorry, because Ansel's committee, you know, our finance committee meetings go for hours and hours. But that does bring us to a public hearing tonight. It'll be chaired by Mr. Ansel, and without further ado, I'll turn the floor over to you, Mr. Ansel.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I will call to order a public hearing this evening as it relates to resolution on the agenda tonight, 2019-61. We had first reading at our last council session. This pertains to a proposed refinancing of Ohio Hospice with the County of Montgomery, Ohio, that is the issuer of bonds as a public hospital financing agency as defined in Chapter 140 of the Ohio Revised Code. The meeting is open for public input, but as we have discussed in the past, this does not impact the city's debt capacity. It is more formality because of the municipal acknowledgement that we will approve Montgomery County to issue these bonds. We have representatives from ICE Miller here this evening, Mike Miller and...is there somebody else with the agency? Mike's the only guy with the agency this evening, so if there's any technical questions, we did cover this in great detail at last council session, but if there's any input from the public, we would be, you know, feel free to open the floor for comments. Otherwise, we will proceed accordingly. Seeing no public input from the floor, I will close the public hearing as it relates to the proposed bond financing on the agenda this evening. Thank you.
All right, we will consider having held a public hearing on the healthcare facilities' revenue bonds, and thank you, Mr. Ansel. Turning to unfinished business for the second reading, which will be presented by Mr. Myers, is amended resolution number 2019-60. So before I get to you, Mr. Myers, I will turn to Mr. Apollo and ask her to read the title.
Amended Resolution Number 2019-60, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to contract with Community Action of Wayne Medina Counties for the provision of transportation services for qualified participants and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Myers, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. You'll note that the amendment also includes the moving this to an emergency declaration, so I will be asking to suspend the rules this evening and move it to third and final vote. We recently had presentations from Leslie Bous, Community Action, and Ashley from the city, the success and growth of the program here in the city. These are the funds that support that. The total being requested for the next budget year is actually the total of what we'd originally authorized at the beginning of last year in the budget, plus the additional funds that we authorized, I think it was in September. The total of those two together from last year's budget, you're right, at about the $550,000 to $600,000, which is the requested amount. Ashley's here this evening if anyone has specific questions. This has been a great program for the city of Worcester. This continues our support of that program. Do I open it up now for questions, or do I ask for third and final first?
Third and final first.
I'd like to make a motion to move this legislation to third and final reading with a suspension of the rules.
Okay, Mr. Myers has moved to suspend the rules requiring three readings of ordinance?
That's second.
Or is it a resolution? No, this is...
It's a resolution. No, it's Resolution 2019-60.
Resolution, yeah, yeah. So, and the second by Mr. Cavan on the suspension of the rules. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules, Mr. Apollo?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Okay, rules are suspended. Mr. Myers, I look to you again.
Like motion to approve Resolution 2019-60.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Myers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bastancic. Now you can see if anyone has a question.
Does anyone have any specific questions regarding passage of this this evening? I know we've been over it, but if you've had a chance to think over it since two weeks ago?
I do have a question, and I guess I'll direct it to Ms. Hirschberger that...
I would have directed it to her anyways.
Yeah. I know that there may be some synergy with maybe expanding the county, expanding services beyond what we're providing. Is that true? And if so, it's a two-part question. If so, are the financial things put in place to keep track of the money, obviously it's a good program, I support it, but we also have a duty to the city taxpayers not to be providing county services.
Yes, so they have, Community Action has a tracking service to make sure that people who live inside the city limits that are using the service. You have to show proof of your address when you sign up for the program, so the money that we approve does not go towards anyone that lives outside of the city limits. Now, the transportation part of it does reach outside...
Right.
...to just a little ways to get to, you know, the Career Center or any place of employment that's three miles, up to three miles out.
And I knew we had that, but I didn't know how it was going to work if all of a sudden the same agency and possibly the same service provider is providing outside...
So they already do that. They do offer free transportation through their own grant that's separate from our subsidized program. And I know at the end of last meeting, we had brought up the workplace access, and I think there's some confusion there. That is both a city and a county program. We would only be paying for people who live inside the city limits to get to their workplace. The rest, the grant and everything else, would take care of anybody that would be from a different community utilizing that service. So they do have a good tracking system. It's worth it.
Well, I know it's a good program, and I know it's available because of the tax increase we passed now a number of years ago, it seemed like yesterday, but it's been a number of years. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a...
Yes.
We had spoke last meeting as well about a possible buy-in with some of the industries that employees do use that, and you had said that maybe in the future, we may hear more on that front, and I was just wanting to comment that I would be looking forward to, if that does occur, you know, please bring it to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for the council?
Okay, seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Okay, amended resolution number 2019-60 passes. Turning to ordinance number 2019-22 will be presented by Mr. Ansel. If you would, Mr. Apollo, please read the title.
Ordinance Number 2019-22, an ordinance appropriating from various funds to individual accounts for the current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Worcester for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We've all had time now, two weeks, to review the preliminary budget projections. I will compliment the finance and the administration for a very thorough, comprehensive, and conservative budgetary forecast for 2020. I especially liked the commentaries by department to get a little better understanding of the landscape and the dynamics that each of the departments operating with the city are anticipating for the upcoming year, but also the conservatism in the forecast. We see the numbers where we're going to finish this year, and we'll identify that better in our working session in two weeks or a week, next Monday, but also the conservatism in terms of the forecasted expenditures for the upcoming year. So the preliminary feedback or assessment, it's very positive, and we should have a very productive and efficient work session one week from today. So thank you, Andre and City Administration, for your due diligence. It looks like it should be a pretty clear and concise discussion and meeting as we plan for 2020. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ansel, and we'll consider ordinance number 2019-22 as having its second reading. Brings us to resolution number 2019-61. It will be presented by Mr. Ansel, but again, I turn to Mr. Apollo and ask her kindly to read the title.
Resolution Number 2019-61, a resolution granting approval of the issuance by the County of Montgomery, Ohio, of its revenue bonds, a portion of the proceeds of which will be used to finance and refinance facilities owned and operated by Life Care Hospice located within the city of Worcester, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Just checking the players, because you know, Mr. Miller's here, or Mr. Kurt Holmes here, and Ms. Christine Michaels, did I get that right? Okay. So they're here, if you have any questions, turn the floor over to Mr. Ansel.
Mr. Ansel? I need to recuse myself from this ordinance.
You're recused, Councilman Myers. Thank you very much for hospice, for the services that you provide those desperately in need, and for the invaluable service that you provide our communities. It's wonderful to see these type of initiatives for refinancing growth and expansion within our community, because, again, there's not a better organization with the more difficult or challenging element of services provided than Ohio Hospice. So continued success, keep up the great work. We know what this is about. It's the refinancing, the issuance of bonds. We've talked and talked about it. There are no surprises. We have a past history of providing these approvals with no incurred liability on behalf of the facility. It's just part of the Ohio Revised Code that we have to kind of sing along with. So that being noted, thank you, hospice. Thank you, ICE Miller, for assisting hospice in this process, and we look forward to the ongoing continued success of the hospice organization within Wayne County. So I would like to suspend the rules and move this to third and final reading this evening, Mr. President.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cavan. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And the rules are suspended, I look to you again, Mr.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
I heard Mr. Sanders first, but he's sitting it towards my good ear. So second by Mr. Ansel, any discussion? Here's a chance to ask any further questions, but since this isn't unique, since we've had one recently, seeing none, I would ask you to please call the roll, Mr. Apollo.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2019-61 passes. Thank you all, and have a Merry Christmas. Now, we'll be looking at the, what is known as the red flag ordinance, which we discussed at last meeting. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders, ordinance number 2019-23. Please read the title, if you would, Mr. Apollo.
Ordinance Number 2019-23, an ordinance adopting a red flag policy and establishing an identity theft prevention program for the Departments of Utilities and Finance and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours, and speaking of identity, I don't remember your beard being so full since the last time I laid eyes on you.
It's only time, sir. It's only time.
It looks good.
Yes, we did have a lengthy conversation regarding this red flag policy, which at this point, the Federal Trade Commission has, back in 2011, placed this on our plate to be compliant. Hopefully, everyone received the backup information from Mr. Scavelli and Mr. Gibbons today, kind of corroborating and providing some clarity in terms of the necessity and the reasoning for this. I myself did look into, I did get on the city of Canton's website today very briefly, and if you apply, if you go to apply for water connection, you either have to have a notary republic stamped paperwork that goes to their, you know, goes to their water department, or you have to show up in person with some type of ID. And it was the same with termination notice as well. So in both cases, they wanted to make sure that, you know, they weren't just, you know, doing it erroneously. So at this point, I mean, I'll open the floor for any discussion, but at this point, I mean, my plan is to move this along this evening.
Well, I'll take that as a motion to...
Motion to suspend the rules, council, place this on third and final.
All right, motion to suspend the rules... All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Rules are suspended, Mr. Sanders?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Any discussion or further questions? Another chance to give an attorney the third degree, since Mr. Scavelli has set himself up as a willing victim here. Although, I see Mr. Gibbons is nowhere in sight since he wrote him out.
My understanding is that the implementation of this with regard to appearing in person and/or a notarized application to verify the identity of the individual would be for new applicants only?
It would be for new applicants if there are...we're not going to go back and redo it for everybody that already has it.
I can appreciate the burden that that would be, but is there only a credit risk of new applicants not existing?
I understand, I just don't know that, at this point, unless we have some indication that there's a problem, that that would be necessary to go back and do that. If there is, the house is transferred, and there is no further...there's no application for the house, then we'll go ahead and verify the individual, or if also the person on that property, I'm sure of that. I don't really see that it's really practical to go ahead and do that.
Well, plus, the existing customers have a track record at this point in terms of payment.
I just wasn't sure...the way the law reads, it basically says all...everybody we extend credit to for 30 days, and I was...I agree, it would be burdensome and not really very practical to have every customer of our waters who are programmed to come in personally. But it just was considered as long as we're just going to meet with what we are required to do. That's all I was asking. I agree, though, that new accounts have less...or have more risk, because they have no history.
Well, and actually, for me, who sees what happens when relationships go bad, that on the other end, for disconnects, you know, sometimes people who live together and then one get...they break up, you know. It's not uncommon for someone to call and say, "Oh, turn off the water at such and such a place." And next thing they know, the person that's remaining there has no water service.
No shower.
That's mean. Anything else? Mr. Sylvester?
I do want to thank our Director of Law for putting that information together. Looks like the important thing is for the city to be able to obtain the information that you outlined, and when I went through it, I didn't see anything that made mandatory the process you had talked about, including someone having to come in, right? There's different ways that they could verify that information without being present?
There is, so, like, we even outlined that there's several. We don't know exactly what the policy's going to be, even if it'll be determined by this term, but what we could do is, as I was asking, we could take the personal ID, which I think will be easy for a lot of people, but for people that's not, we can do it by mail, email, have them go up in their statement. There's several different ways that we can go for people that are unable to actually show up in person.
The only other thing I did not see is, I know you referenced the Federal Trade Commission, but what was the timing on that? Do you know? I know we're trying to...
The timing on when this passed, that we had to...
And is there a date that we're supposed to be in compliance, or?
Well, so, this was passed back in 2000.
2001, I'm sorry.
This was passed back in 2011. One of the things we referenced, because that was a question that came up, was why this had not been done until this point. The best answer that we can give is that up until the...for the prior law directors, we're not really sure why a prior law director, I guess, in that time period. I believe this became on...this came on the radar for Kevin back when his out of law was still in my position. It just was not...there were other things going on, so this didn't follow to the surface. At this point, it did, and that's what we're here for now. So, why that had it done prior to that point, we're not sure.
Difficult to blame current legal counsel for past errors.
Well, the...
Not errors.
Other thing I can say is, you know, the federal government passes so many mandates, it's hard to keep track of them, and I know the city, and the real important ones, you know, do this. This one is just almost like a housekeeping to get in compliance.
My suspicion is if we had bad debt issues with regard to these accounts, we would have addressed it probably more promptly, but since we don't have that in our city, thank goodness, in our community, hasn't become necessary. But again, as a housekeeping measure, I think, time to do it. Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 2019 day twenty-three passes. Next resolution, number 2019 day sixty-seven, it'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. Before I get there, or get to Mr. Ansel, would you please read the title, Mr. Apollo?
Resolution number 2019 dash sixty-seven, a resolution accepting the recommendations of the Worcester Tax Incentive Review Council with respect to existing Community Reinvestment Act agreements.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
It's always quite a pleasure, at this point, every year, where we sit down and we review the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Committee and the hard work that Jonathan Malley generates to coordinate this dubious and overwhelming process. And I think we can all agree, we've had time to review his archive summary of performance of each of our CRAs and EZ, but we're going to break them down as the resolutions do this evening. And I'm just going to highlight, and Jonathan is here to answer any questions, should there be any. During the review period, the city had 30 active Community Reinvestment Acts agreements. And for those that might not be aware, that's revitalization in depressed areas or areas that might be more challenged for investments to occur, so we are giving them tax relief incentives to make those investments. The summary of the current 30 active CRAs represent $33 million, $33,76,242, to be exact, in property investment for the 2018 review period, representing a total of 336 jobs attributed to the CRA. That's 82% more than what the developers originally projected or committed to. The estimated payroll for the time period referenced is $13,966,526. That's the type of return on investment that we receive through these type of initiatives. It's so important for the city to focus the energies in those areas that have the potential but also have potential risk. That's why we provide these incentives. So, it's marvelous, we have a summary, it would take too long to go through, but we can see all of the wonderful CRA projects summarized. And again, I want to thank Jonathan and the efforts and the objectivity of the TIRC, the Tax and Incentive Review Commission. And I mentioned the names of the participants at the last session, so to avoid redundancy, I won't do it again, but thank you for the dedication and service and the outstanding support. And Jonathan, the outstanding compilation of information, it's compelling, it's insightful, and it's very reassuring. With that, I would like to suspend the rules this evening and move resolution 2019 dash sixty-seven to third and final reading.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sylvester. Any further comments, questions? I remember, you know, when I asked a question, I mean, most everything was in compliance and there, you know, there wasn't much the committee could do other than approve, so their recommendations are to approve it as presented to council.
Correct. There was one particular application that did come in with a request for modifications, so that'll be arriving to you as a separate piece of legislation. And that's really the following line of the state guidelines and the agreements that we had previously laid out with that particular project. But otherwise, all other projects received compliance. A few of those projects are technically what's called out of agreement. That means that they are not utilizing a tax evasion right now, and the reason why we keep them in an agreement and continue that is it preserves the city's right to claw back on any tax incentives should something go awry in the future during that period. So, that protects the city's interests there.
And just as an aside, as a new proud father again, how's your sleep quotient?
Well, thank you very much for asking. The most are pretty good. David's getting the most amount of sleep out of everyone, but thank you.
Good luck with it.
Congrats.
Any other questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 2019 day sixty-seven passes, and I thank my council colleagues who served on that for taking the time to look at all the information. That brings us to resolution number 2019 day sixty-eight. That also will be presented by Mr. Ansel. Before I get back to Mr. Ansel, I will ask Ms. Apollo if she would please read the title.
Resolution number 2019 dash sixty-eight, a resolution accepting the recommendations of the Worcester Tax Incentive Review Council with respect to existing enterprise zone agreements.
Okay, Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours once again.
This resolution is the accompanying work of the Tax Incentive Review Council. This pertains to enterprise zones, as noted, and the statistics here are equally as favorable, perhaps more so because the investments are more sizable and larger, and it does have higher payroll type of dividends being re...but the 14 active enterprise zones represent 2,270 people being employed on payroll by the various companies involved in these agreements. The payroll is $159,803,831. You missed a comma there, Jonathan, but let's just round. I like rounding, $160 million in payroll. Since 2014, the program has resulted in $158,716,126,000 in property and facility investment, so nearly equal to that in payroll, almost $159 million investment across 19 different projects. Some have closed, some are ongoing. There is a declining balance. The taxes forgiven in 2018 was $455,000, opposed as to...opposed to the prior year of 55...$551,939. So, it is a declining balance there. At the same time, $1,054,615 in real estate taxes were collected for all EZ-enabled projects, so huge return on the investment. And as we know, over the 10- or 12-year period, the EZs fade away, and everything then goes back to normal taxation rates. So, we can certainly see the impact that our EZs and enterprise zones, or enterprise zones and CRAs have had on the impact, positive impact to Worcester. So, that being noted, I am going to motion to suspend the rules this evening, Mr. President, and move resolution 2019 dash sixty-eight to third and final reading.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sylvester. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
The rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sylvester. Any further questions or discussion, Mr. Sylvester?
Just a couple things, as a matter of follow-up. Did we figure out if the agreement 389 dash 12 dash 02 is a retired project or an active project? That was a question from the last meeting. It was the ABS. It was listed under both in the summary sheet.
You had it both retired and active, Jonathan. We talked about that at the last session.
Oh, okay, my apologies there. That should be listed as terminated, in the process of being removed. It never generated any real estate tax, and the property owner is out of agreement with us considering those properties.
So, is it...
It should not be listed as active. It should be shown as retired.
Retired, okay.
Not moved on.
Okay, and then in Mr. Ansel's comments just this evening, you referenced 19 projects? I just didn't know if my sheet was inaccurate or...
On Jonathan's commentary, he highlighted that there were 14 active projects in the enterprise zone. Did I say 19? I meant 14.
Okay, okay, 14. 14 active, okay.
And actually, with the deletion, Mr. Sylvester, there's four in 11, there's post-abatement that we're still monitoring, there's 11 active, the ABS, the 389 12 02 was a misnomer, that was deleted, so we have 14 that we're still monitoring, even though four are post-abatement, we're still reporting and summarizing their economic impact.
Gotcha.
Yes, or Mr. Ross Tanner?
Jonathan, I just have a quick question on a term I'm real familiar with. Under description and request, you said this program was reserved for exporting businesses? Is that businesses that make goods for sale outside of the city? Or how's that term defined?
I would concur with what you just said. It's providing a service or a good that serves beyond, and usually beyond the state of Ohio, is what we're usually looking for with that. Economic development terms we call that, meaning primary business sector, so anything where you're manufacturing, or if you're doing a service that goes beyond your local population, that's what this is geared for. Those are the types of jobs that help to pull value and revenue into a community, and so that's where that makes a lot of economic sense for us to provide it to those firms.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, it's always good to bring dollars from outside the community instead of just circulating the same dollars around, so. Where's those dollars, Sylvester?
I still only get 11 EZ active projects. What am I missing here? Just to make sure we have...
Yeah, before, you have the ones that were still post-abatement that we're monitoring, so they're part of the summary, but they're not receiving any tax abatements.
Correct. The 11 is what is, as of reporting, they're actually active. I mean, we've got a series more that would have been active, but they're either terminated
With the removal of number eight?
Sure.
There's only 10, because that number was inflated. But there's four that we're still monitoring and referenced in the summary of the data that I provided, or that Jonathan provided. So there are 14 being reported, but really only 10 active, Jonathan. Yeah.
I digress, I count 11, but I'm not going to split any more hairs. You already did it for us, John.
No, with the elimination was 12, you're right, so there are 11.
Yep, okay.
Anything else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 2019-68 passes. And I will thank Ms. Warden again for sitting in on that on my behalf.
My pleasure.
Okay, resolution number 2019-69. This too will be presented by Mr. Ansel. And before I get there, I'll ask Mr. Paulo if you please read the title.
Resolution number 2019-69. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract to join Buckeye Ohio Risk Management Association Benefits Pool, BORMA, for the furnishing and administration of employee healthcare benefits.
Hopefully you got some water in that brief break, because I turned my eyes to you to read...
Thank you, Mr. President. I am, I have a little cough this evening. As we discussed before, the city embarked upon a very aggressive competitive review for healthcare coverage and risk management. This was a priority because we had been experiencing an 8% to 10% annual increase, which is very kind of prevalent today. It's unfortunate, so they got aggressive and they looked at a number of options, both on stop-loss and administration, of which is summarized in our attachment. And they've elected to proceed for council, with council's approval, of course, to go to the Buckeye Ohio Risk Management Association, also known as BORMA, a very accredited and accomplished management firm. And through this, conservatively, it will generate a $200,000-plus cost down in terms of our healthcare management and coverage for the city of Worcester. So it was a bold move, it broke tradition. And on the conservative side, it will have quite a positive impact. The total expenditures for healthcare coverage exceed $4 million for the city. So if we can save 5% to 6%, that's a sizable number. So I commend, the city's administration is to be commended for thinking outside of the box and taking this initiative. It certainly was a lot of hard work, because we saw the companies that were involved in this competitive review. But it'll have big dividends in terms of cost reduction to the taxpayers. So that being noted, I would like to suspend the rules and move resolution 2019-69 to third and final reading this evening.
Okay, a motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
A second, yes.
Second by Mr. Bastancic. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sylvester. And who doesn't like to save money? Mr. Cavan?
Is there a change in any of the benefits with that? Is there a loss of benefits to offset that difference in...
We have collective bargaining agreements with each of our unions. So our healthcare has to, whatever program we have, has to substantially match that, so...
Match?
That's a good question.
There'd be a couple little tweaks, but substantially the same.
Okay, okay. Usually with an insurance company, when you get a better rate, you get the same...
That is very true.
Trade-off, yeah.
And so the contribution by the employees won't change as well? That's based on contract as well, isn't it?
Correct. That'll be something we'll be negotiating again here. We had pitched that up in the last contract, so that'll be something that we'll be negotiating again this next year.
Hopefully their service is as good, too. That's the other component, too, that is...
Do we have, is the city employee contribution, I know the agreements might be all different somewhat, but is it roughly 10% of the total agreement per month?
Anything else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 2019-69 passes. Brings us to resolution 2019-70. This will again be on Mr. Ansel's shoulders to present. He must be tired. I see you only have one more before...
Yes, sir.
And it's hard to believe, we're just getting through old business in this piece of legislation. Before I get back to you, Mr. Ansel, Mr. Paulo, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2019-70. A resolution appointing a representative and an alternate to serve on the Board of Directors of the Buckeye Ohio Risk Management Association Benefits Pool, BORMA.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
With our recently approved decision recommendation to proceed through a pooled cooperative, we now have the opportunity to have a representative on the city's behalf to sit on that board, that executive council. That person will be appointed, and I'm assuming right now it will be our HR director sitting on that, or who is going to be?
Joel.
Joel will be sitting on that. And who will the alternate be, Joel?
HR.
Okay, vice versa. Okay, so that wasn't outlined in the legislation. It's a very important role, because we now have a voice at that table on that cooperative. And we'll be reviewing the financials associated with the losses and the premiums to make sure that that remains viable for our city employees. So good luck, Joel, sitting on that board. Where are the board meetings held, in Columbus?
They are in various places.
Good.
It's more northeast Ohio, so hopefully not too far.
Good, I'm sure we'll be hosting a meeting one day.
All volunteer.
Good, good. Well, so that being noted, the mechanics behind it, with us having a representative, I will motion to suspend the rules and move resolution 2019-70 to third and final reading this evening.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sylvester. Any further discussion or comment? Guess the only one can complain is Jeanette, and she's not here, too bad. Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 2019-70 passes. That brings us finally to new business. First item on the agenda under new business is ordinance number 2019-24. And a new voice will be heard in the form of Ms. Warden. Before I get to you, I will have Mr. Paulo read the title. And I do note this is slated for three readings. Mr. Paulo, if you would, please?
Ordinance number 2019-24. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of real estate and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. After much negotiation and pending council approval this evening, the city has received, or has offered to purchase a property located at 246 South Buckeye Street in downtown Worcester. That offer has been approved for a price of $79,102. Or, I'm sorry, it's been accepted, not approved. While there are no immediate plans, the structure will eventually be demolished and the property made available for future expansion of the community center. Until that time, the city staff plans to propose alternative uses for the property. And prior to closing, the seller can salvage some fixtures from the home. As the purchase agreement is contingent on council's approval, I make a motion to move this ordinance to third and final reading this evening.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sylvester. Mr. Paulo, would you please call the roll on the motion?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Rules are suspended. I look to you, Ms. Warden.
Thank you, I move to approve the purchase of 246 South Buckeye Street.
All right, motion to adopt by Ms. Warden, is there a second? Second by Mr. Bastancic. I should note, we've discussed this, so this shouldn't come to any surprise to the people. And I'm happy we could get the property, because I think in the long run, this and the next piece of legislation will certainly improve that section of the downtown. Any other comments?
Yes, you had mentioned that there, someone may take some of the...
Fixtures?
Fixtures?
It's the current owner who actually turned it into a rental property, but grew up in the home. And that was part of the purchase agreement, was that they would have access to go in and take fixtures from the home prior to demolition.
There's no plan to donate the, is it usable enough that we might be able to donate it? I mean, could it be moved? I mean, because of the cost of demolition, it may be about the same as moving it.
We have had our building department take a look at the structure. And those are the types of things that they do take an assessment of when they're looking at the property. Right now, we don't have enough data to suggest that that would work. But there's the opportunity to continue looking at that type of an option. When it comes to fixtures, because as Ms. Warden pointed out, we are looking for some alternative uses for the site that would support the community in the short term before a community center would be ready for expansion. We have asked the seller if they would allow us to retain certain fixtures up through that time period. And so we're looking at providing them with a license or redocument, authorizing them to take those fixtures at the time that the home would be demolished, rather than necessarily before closing. And so this is all verbal, but we're very thankful that they generously, verbally said that they would work with us on that. Anything that they do not take, we would be looking to donate, to make available to some of our local organizations. We have a good relationship with Habitat for Humanity, with the city, who partnered with us on some of our programs. But also, we have Goodwill Industries and a couple of other organizations that might be able to utilize any salvageable fixtures. So we would want to engage them in exploring that, not only of this site, but also the one that we're about to talk about next as well.
Okay. Jonathan, were there still a couple renters in there?
This home right now is vacant. So those vacancies at the time that we made the offer, and similarly with the properties that we're about to talk about, those are also vacant.
Anything else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2019-24 passes. Ordinance number 2019-25 will be presented by Ms. Warden, is slated for three readings. If you would, please, Mr. Paulo, read the title of the next ordinance.
Ordinance number 2019-25. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of real estate and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Warden, I turn the floor over to you.
Thank you again. So the city has successfully secured agreements to purchase properties located at 230 and 238 South Buckeye Street for the previously discussed amount of $120,000 or $60,000 each, respectively. Both of the existing structures are vacant, as Mr. Malley just explained. And in their current states, these properties both pose maintenance and safety concerns. The purchases will remedy those issues while simultaneously adding over an acre and a half when combined with the previous property. That will then be made available for future community center expansion. Demolition of the structures is expected to take place in January. And the seller, again, will be permitted to remove or salvage any material from the property prior to demolition. So purchase of these properties is contingent on our approval as a council during this meeting tonight. And so therefore, I move to place this ordinance on third and final reading once again.
Motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended, Ms. Warden.
Thank you, I make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden, is there a second? Second by Mr. Bastancic. And I reiterate that this will certainly improve that section of the city. So good job by council. And again, these are extra monies thanks to the tax increase to allow us to do things like that. And I should point out that this, there might be, there's a big enough area that there might be other things than just the expansion of the community center.
Sure.
Yeah, they were beautiful old houses in their time, but that time has passed.
Kind of like me.
Well, I wouldn't go that far. World beats us up enough, Mike.
Any further discussion? This is basically the same as the previous. Seeing no discussion, and how can you top that comment? Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
All right, ordinance 2019-25 passes. Ansel will be giving his last presentation tonight. It will be ordinance number 2019-26. It's slated for three readings, and this is probably the ultimate ordinance we look to pass every year with regard to the budget. Before I get to you, Mr. Ansel, I will turn to Mr. Paulo to read the title of the penultimate piece of legislation.
Ordinance number 2019-26. An ordinance amending the annual appropriation ordinance.
That's short and sweet, Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Very straightforward. As you know, in July, we have fuel tax increases. Those additional funds are funneled or held in the general fund. And at the end of the year, we transfer those funds to maintenance and repair for street construction to cover costs. So very routine, it's something we do every year. And that amount this year is $213,000 of additional tax, gas tax receipts. So that being noted, I would like to suspend the rules and move this to third and final reading this evening.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel. And... Yeah, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel, and second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt, Mr. Apollo?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2019 day 26 passes. Last ordinance is ordinance number 2019 day 27. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders, and it is slated for three readings. Would you please read the title, Mr. Apollo?
Ordinance number 2019 dash 27. An ordinance to amend section 743 of the codified ordinances regarding regulation of taxi cabs and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. In order to simplify some of the requirements for taxi cabs, we've sat down, administration sat down and looked at this and has made these proposed changes, which basically... It's basically related to lettering, allows a magnetic sign, whereas previously we was basically saying it needed to be painted onto the vehicle, which at this point, magnetic sign will make it a lot easier for the taxi cab companies. There was also some additional, like you said, there's a lot of specifics that at this point have all been removed. The basic information still will need to be appear on the vehicle, but at this point, like you say, it's really just making this a lot cleaner for those that are taxi cab operators, so that they can just... They still will need to provide a certain level of information, but it just makes it easier for them to be able to do such. And then the only other portion of this is that the one section related to they're allowing to be or allowing to have a driver's, taxi driver's license, they had to have no convictions, and again, we're cleaning the verbiage up on that, basically because Medicaid administered programs already provides a specifics in the Ohio Administrative Code, section 5160 dash 45 dash 11, which at that point then, again, takes the... It takes anything that we had in it and makes it a lot cleaner that we just follow their, follow the state code. So that's what we have at this point, being first reading. I'll open the floor for any questions.
Mr. Bastancic?
Yeah, I have a question. Under definitions, it talks about a taxi or taxi cab means any motor vehicle driven, engaged in the business of carrying passengers for hire or offered for hire. And right under that in section F, it says taxi driver means any person who drives or operates a taxi cab for hire or fail or fare and who is in actual physical control of a taxi cabs. How does that... How's that going to apply to somebody who drives for Uber or Lyft?
It doesn't. That was one of the things we discussed internally, and the state has, say, recently, within the last several months, passed legislation regulating Lyft and Uber. And because we actually had one taxi company that was considering changing to what's called a transportation network company, I think is how they defined the Uber and Lyft, the ride-sharing type of services, until they realized, because they thought that would be easier to get licensed, until they realized that the laws passed by the state actually were not easier than what ours were. So they have very similar regulations, in some cases even stricter, to be to work for the Lyft or Uber companies. So this is not intended to cover those. I think, like you said, the definition of taxi company would not apply to a ride-share type of... Well, you know, the definition of taxi driver may, but the company does not.
So you're saying that Uber and Lyft have more qualifications or better qualifications than what we have?
They have very similar ones, and in some cases a little... Like, for instance, some of their, the condition of cars are higher that they have to meet to drive than what's technically what the taxi cab would be.
Currently, the way we do our subsidy of our city passes of city residents, they wouldn't be able to utilize those on Uber or Lyft anyway, would they?
Correct.
So they would... That would be maybe not a huge loss to that agency, but certainly something they should consider if they have a percentage of their businesses based on passes, so.
And in our regulations, when we adopted these, an update back in 15 did weed out, you know, some of the less reputable, you know, people that were trying to operate those. And that was part of the concern that we had back at that time, was the condition and some of the complaints we were getting, so that's why we did that. And then, we've actually been working on some of these updates since about July, I think you mentioned that. We got emails back. Tony Lemon, Captain Lemon, is the person within the police department that manages the licensing program. Leslie manages the program for Community Action. And so, we're emails going around between Tony and myself and Ashley and Leslie about... And actually, several of these are recommendations that Leslie made, especially since our program expanded and has some of those medical providers and Medicaid, which has a very, very long list, much longer than ours, of requirements to get a license. So it just made sense to adopt, so everybody gets help with that.
No, yeah, we tightened the guidelines for the quality and safety of the cabs that are able to operate in the city, but at the same time, I think it was then, actually, that we implemented the program where they could apply for, I think it was up to $900 in scholarship grant money to upgrade or improve the quality or safety of their cabs, and we've got a number of applications for that. So there are funds available through the city, through this program, to help have us have good quality and safe cabs in our city. We didn't just require it and say, you're on your own. It was not like often an unfunded mandate. We actually gave them an opportunity to upgrade and us participate in that, so.
It looks like the gist of this legislation is just with identification and signage.
Yeah, Leslie actually mentioned, she was talking about the sign on the top, which you don't really see much anymore, and we had specifications for, you know, six-inch letters this, five-inch letters that.
It was overkill.
And that was overkill, as long as you can read it and it has this information. You put it on the sides in the back.
Long overdue. Yeah.
Mr. Cavan?
Also, I see in section four, it talks about a conviction of driving under the influence or alcohol. Is that during the past six years? So we would run that past the police department? Is that a state law?
No, that's something we added at the recommendation of Captain Lemon. That wasn't specifically in the Medicaid codified ordinance, so we added that in specifically.
Okay. Sensible.
Mr. Silvestri?
Thank you, Joel, for answering some of these questions. I do remember back in 15 when there were some concerns, safety concerns, based on visibility and credibility. Maybe it's a little bit of a different world with people being comfortable with some of these internet-based ride-sharing programs. But a couple of things for me, I guess I see the, maybe the wisdom in relaxing the visibility a little bit, you know, with the number of inches in height, maybe that's a little bit overboard, but, you know, just looking at the fact that, you know, before we had prohibited someone with a misdemeanor drug conviction from ever obtaining a taxi driver's license, I think at the root of that, it was the safety of our citizens. To me, I would feel a lot safer knowing that the screening process was pretty strict and that nobody with any kind of a drug offense is going to be able to get a taxi driver's license, but it sounds like we would be relaxing that as well.
No, we're adopting the Medicaid requirements, so they have tier one permanent exclusions, tier two ten-year exclusionary periods, and they have a much longer list than what we have actually.
Okay, so they're just being more specific. We had said any kind of a drug conviction, misdemeanor included, and you can never, never be a taxi driver.
Well, from a clarification, we almost have to adopt those guidelines because some of the grant funds the Community Action obtains for the management of the program, not specifically the past program, which is our subsidy for citizens of Worcester. Those dollars are pretty much earmarked. We know where those go, there's pretty good tracking on that. Because, though, there are other grant funds that Community Action applies for that have to meet these guidelines, and then therefore then our past program is part of that transportation budget, we almost have to comply, otherwise it would get very cumbersome. It's a very complicated system, and I know that Leslie does a great job of sorting through the weeds and all those things, but this is going to make it a little, just one less thing that needs to be addressed with regard to the specifications of drivers, so. Thank you.
Well, with that, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Sanders to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll to suspend the rules, Mr. Apollo?
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
The rules are suspended. I turn my tired eyes to you.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders.
Second.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Ansel. Any further discussion? I think we've beat this dead horse pretty well. Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
No.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2019 day 27 passes. Brings us to the miscellaneous portion. I need my little cheek sheet. Thank you, Mr. Apollo. We will start with Mr. Bastancic.
Nothing further at this time.
And if you still have a voice, Mr. Ansel?
Nothing more, Mr. President.
Ms. Warden?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Mr. Silvestri?
I wish the Finance Committee well in their scrutiny and review of the city budget, looking forward to next Monday's meeting, 5:30.
We're sure that everyone will attend.
Mr. Sanders?
Nothing to add, Mr. President.
Mr. Myers?
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. I did attend an event up at the hospital earlier this evening. It was billed as an event for the honoring of the hospital. It was a nice surprise, though, for Bill Sharon to thank him for his 25 years of service to our community. Bill was a transplant here when he took the position at the hospital. I've known Bill pretty much most of the time he's been here. He's an outstanding, him and his family have been an outstanding addition to our community, grateful that he's here and for the job he's done for us at the hospital. Just congratulations to him for his work and grateful that they're all here. Thank you. That's all.
And Mr. Cavan, we'll give you the last word.
I, too, had wanted to thank the Worcester Hospital staff for earning such a prestigious award. I believe Bill had said that only 2% of hospitals their size were eligible, and again, as Mr. Myers had pointed out, 25 years, Bill Sharon has, it's been stellar stewardship of our hospital, and I think we're all really lucky and really grateful. Thank you.
And it was barely a croak because he's spoken too much, but I heard Mr. Ansel move to adjourn. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Myers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.